With the meeting at this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:35 September 10. Can everyone please rise and quicken? May I please have a little call?
Alderman Ventura Morale?
Here.
Alderman Coop?
Here.
Alderman Scott Childress?
Here.
Alderman Worthington?
Here.
Alderman Carey?
Here.
Alderman Davis?
Here.
Alderman O'Reilly?
Here.
Alderman Shavit?
Here.
Alderman Shaw?
Here.
We have a call. I get a motion to dispense with the minutes of the previous meeting and approve same.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Minutes are adopted, nine zero. I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the general bills.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Passing, nine zero. We now enter into the public speaking portion of the council meeting. Thirty-minute allotment time has been set aside for this purpose. Please give your name and address at the podium and direct your comments to the council chair for the ultimate cannot engage in debate. Thank you very much. First speaker please.
Joseph DiFallo.
Thank you very much, Council President. Joseph DiFallo, 66th Street. I'm here to discuss one of the resolutions that was tabled at the meeting. It's the speed limit reduction. One of my best to lower the speed limit to 25 miles an hour. And our illustrious councilperson in the third ward motioned to table it because he wanted to build up a better case before he presented. In other words, he's keeping it alive. The only thing that that resolution can do is punish the residents of Kingston. Increased fines. And you're not going to enforce it. You don't enforce 30 miles an hour. And there's no statistics that say you do enforce it because you don't. Okay? So how can you lower the speed limit to 25 miles an hour when you don't enforce 30? Okay? This is not meant for the people. This is meant for one word used constantly, control. We're going to control. You know, you hear that Washington, control. This is Kingston. The other thing is, pass a stupid resolution, okay? For memorializing a resolution for gun control. And then two days later, they're on the radio and say, we don't need the Second Amendment. But you allow the basic ingredients to create bombs. And you don't address that. Now, the Boston bombers went with fireworks, took the gunpowder out of fireworks and made a bomb out of it. How many people did they ever kill? Okay? It's not guns that kill people, it's people who kill people. Right? I just want to keep it short. I know you don't want to hear all your, you know, gotten things over and over. Okay? But you will hear again and again, and I will never let them die. Okay? Especially my councilperson in War III. I mean, I have lived in War III for 50 years, and he is the worst councilperson ever had. And that's not saying anything. The worst does absolutely nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Jonathan Loehn? Is that you?
Yes.
Can you spell your last name?
L-O-P-H-R. It's Councilor, municipal for.
Thank you.
I wanted to talk about this resolution that I heard was going to be discussed here today called the ETPA. It's, yeah. I hope that this can be passed and hopefully enacted quickly. I just, I mean, for me personally, I don't know the stories of like every person across the city. I just know my own story. I'm just kind of on the edge of being able to forward around the way it is. I mean, I had to borrow money to get a car to be able to get to work, and I'm still paying off the debt from that. And I have these debts and I just, I just have enough to pay my rent. And I don't know if my car rents down again. I don't know how much more debt I might get. I mean, I'm getting, I'm getting by the way it is now, just with the level of my rents are at the moment. I, I heard some downstairs neighbors of mine, they say their rent went up 500 bucks. I have to sleep in my car if my rent went up 500 bucks. I can't move in with my mom. She, she's in the senior housing place where, you know, people aren't allowed to stay as guests for more than a month. I can't move in with my sister, she's out of state. I, it would be bad if my rent went up in the way that would happen if the ETPA did not get brought in. I know this is true with me. I, you know, I've heard stories that there's a lot of people who have similar stories. I don't know, but I just know my own story that for me, this is a really serious issue. And if you guys are able to, to fund this study and hopefully get the rent control in, I would be really grateful. So please, please don't make me sleep in my car if you're able to. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Alex, you'll have to say your name first.
Hi, my name is Alex Pena Giatopoulos, and I'm also here for the ETPA, the gentlemen that is called. So in Kingston, the last two years and around Kingston, there's been two really large companies buying up a lot of apartment complexes. And they have a documented in New York Times method of churning through tenants and kicking out the people that can't sustain a $300, $500 rent increase, and then also just not offering lease renewals to the lower income tenants. Then once the tenant's out, they fix up the place just a little bit and try to rent it from some, to somebody from the city or people that will do anything to get enough money to pay the rent. I used to live in Chestnut Mansion about eight or nine years ago, and back then the rent was $8.50 a month for one bedroom with heat included. I talked to the tenants there. The rents have gone up over the years, but now that there's a new landlord there, they're seeing increases of $300, $400 a month with very low notice. So that's, you know, that's why the ETPA is important. I just wanted to read a memo from some state line organizers that were saying how these surveys should be conducted, and I'll email this to everyone too. So before a municipality can declare housing emergency, the option to the ETPA, the municipality must establish that the vacancy rate for the class of housing to be regulated is 5% or less. The law does not specify how the vacancy rate should be defined. There are two ways of defining a vacancy rate, the gross or the net. And just to, just to summarize it, gross bad, net good. So the gross vacancy rate includes all vacant apartments at the time of the survey, no matter what the condition of the apartments and no matter why they are vacant. So that's the one over the years, over the last 40 years, the gross vacancy rate has not been sufficient to determine ETPA. The one thing you want to ask the company to use is the net vacancy rate. The net vacancy rate is determined, is subtracted from the gross vacancy rate, all apartments which are uninhabitable or unavailable for rent. Put another way, the net vacancy rate is comprised of all apartments within the class that would be covered by ETPA that at the time of the survey are vacant, habitable, and available for rent. The reason the apartment is unavailable for rent is irrelevant in terms of determining the net vacancy rate. It doesn't matter if the landlord is warehousing it for speculative reasons, if the landlord's renovating the apartment, or if he's holding it vacant for a friend or relative who's moving in in three months. The important fact is that the apartment is off the market, not available to renters who are looking for a place to live. It should therefore not be counted as vacant for purposes of determining the supply of rental housing in a municipality. The same standard applies to a lot of the data departments, including moves that are boarded up. Such units are not available to potential renters looking for a home, and they're therefore not relevant to the survey. The United States Bureau of the Census uses net vacancy rate as the valid indicator of the housing emergency, as does the city. The courts, including the New York State Court, appealed to consistently upheld the use of the net vacancy rate as justification for continuing housing emergency in the face of landlord lawsuits insisting that the standard should be the gross vacancy rate. So I'll make sure if it gets a copy of that, and I have a bunch of case law cited after that. So I'm looking forward to see if the survey gets funded. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. That's all that I've signed up. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council at this time? Seeing no one, I'm going to declare a public speaking portion of the meeting closed. Now go to claims and communications. Here ain't no discussion. They'll be on file at the clerk's office. Anyone wishing to look at it? I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the general bills at pacing.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The bills are paid, nine zero. We now enter into report of committees. Resolution number 167.
Resolution 167 of 2019. Resolution, the common counsel of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing a budgetary transfer in the 2019 comptroller's budget to adjust accounts mid-year as per attached.
On the question. Yes, Alderman Coop?
Yes, Mr. President. Last night's caucus, a question came up. Last night's caucus, a question came up about one particular item, that the comptroller wishes to transfer money into equipment maintenance, $7,500. The question came up, why so much? The comptroller has informed me that this is a result of repairs and/or replacements within the on-street parking meters. So it sounds like there's no comptroller, okay? Again, this particular transfer has no financial impact to the city. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Hopefully he'll put something in this year's budget to be flat, that, you know, for maintenance issues, so. Anyone else on the question? Hearing no one else, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now go to resolution number 168.
Resolution 168 of 2019. Resolution of the common counsel of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing adopting a bond ordinance in the sum of $7 million to fund a portion of the Cooper Lake Dam and intake remediation specifically for the construction of Phase 1 and Phase 2.
On the questions. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now move to the bond ordinance, resolution number 169.
Resolution 169 of 2019. An ordinance authorizing Phase 1 and Phase 2 of Cooper Lake Dam and intake remediation in and for the City of Kingston, Ulster County, New York, at a maximum estimating cost of $7 million bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof.
On the question. Longwall, wait.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Longwall.
Alderman Carey?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman O'Reilly?
Yes.
Alderman Shavit?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ventura Morale?
Aye.
Alderman Coop?
Yes.
Alderman Scott Childress?
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
I'm sorry. Alderman Worthington Fallow?
Yes.
That everybody? The bond ordinance is adopted, nine zero. We now move to resolution number 178.
Resolution 178 of 2019. Resolution of the common counsel of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing a budgetary transfer in the 2019 historic landmarks budget for $127.80.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now move to resolution number 171.
Resolution 171 of 2019. Resolution of the common counsel of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing a budgetary transfer in the 2019 Parks and Recreation Budget to cover expenses related to an agreement with the family of Woodstock and the Kingston City Schools in the amount of $15,000.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now move to resolution number 172.
Resolution 172 of 2019. Resolution of the common counsel of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing a budget modification to cover expenses associated with equipment upgrades at the Everett Hodge Center facility.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now move to resolution number 173.
Resolution 173 of 2019. Resolution of the common counsel of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing a budget modification that would allow for the purchase and installation of electric vehicle charging infrastructure at Kingston City Wall.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now move to resolution number 174.
Resolution 174 of 2019. Resolution, the common counsel of the City of Kingston, New York, issuing a negative declaration in connection with the Henry Street Safeties School Project in the State Environmental Quality Review Act process pursuant to six NYCRR Part 617.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now move to resolution number 175.
Resolution 175 of 2019. Resolution, the common counsel of the City of Kingston, New York, memorializing and opposing the Dan Scammer LLC permits for the expansion to a year-round fracking, gas, and diesel burning power plant in Newburgh, New York.
On the question. Hearing, Alderman Coop?
Thank you, Mr. President. I along with most of us, probably everyone in this room, vehemently support the reduction of fossil fuels because the combustion of fossil fuels emits CO2, which we learned today was at a start high in 2018. And the mechanism there is simply the combustion produces CO2, which does not permit low-temperature radiation from the earth to escape, but allows high-temperature radiation from the sun to penetrate. Therefore, we get what's known as global warming. I do strongly advocate renewables such as solar, wind, hydro, the thermal, even tidal. In fact, I have taught a course in renewable energy, it's too even more engineering for five years, where I tried to present a balanced picture. I myself have solar panels, 30, when I own, 3,400 kilowatt hours provides, matches the total consumption I use, so I am not drawing anything from the grid. So I am a believer in renewable energies. But, and it's a big question, I must first point out that commercial widespread development of renewables is a very, very long process. And some of the people that are in charge of laboratories and industries certainly understand this. Until then, we still have to depend on fossil fuels. Probably everyone here eats their home with natural gas, and everyone here came in a car, I mean, city bicycles, bicycle outsides. Dan Scammer, it's a plant that is essentially, essentially already built for coal and can be converted to natural gas. The pollution of natural gas, in terms of, a little technical here, in pounds of CO2 per kilowatt hour, is only 42% of the same parameter for coal. The Dan Scammer plant is essentially available, not to say as Mr. Riley has asked, is there any construction necessary? Probably. There's going to be some modifications needed to convert this plant, but it can be available as a low-cost peaking facility that we may need, particularly if Indian Point Dupont Plant goes down. Are we going to rely on Canadian hydropower lines? Canadians have a lot of hot power available, but to do that, they have to have these awful, ugly transmission lines comes down over La Montagne, Massachusetts. Are they going to live with that? Not so easy. I don't think so. It's true, the source of natural gas is from fracking. But your house and my house is probably heated with fracking natural gas. We don't know where it's coming from. So, I support the, I vehemently support renewable energies, but it's going to take a long time, and we have to live with fossil fuels. It's with us if we're going to use the energy we want. We don't want the lights to go out, we want our heat. So where I stand on this, I'm probably going to have to hold my nose a little bit and oppose this resolution. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? Seeing no one else, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, eight one. We now move to resolution number 176.
Resolution 176 of 2019. Resolution of the common counsel of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the amendment of a bond ordinance to include an additional sum of $3,339,800 for the purpose of cooperating funds to complete the engineering and construction of Phases 1 and 2 of the Hasbrook CSO Sewer Shed Stormwater Separation Project.
On the question. Alderman O'Reilly?
Thank you, Mr. President. This averting of the, this averting of the storm water from the Hasbrook area in the City of Kingston is going to benefit the city's citizens now and in the future. The sewer plant that we have operating now is very old, and with the, we have rain events, which means a large amount of rain in this area and other areas around the city where the water isn't separated, the storm water isn't separated, it goes right into the sewage plant. And if the sewage plant is overwhelmed, then it goes into the roundabout creek without being, without being treated. That's not a pretty picture. What this would do is, this would help, I'm not saying it's going to make it perfect, because we need to do more, but this, this correction of infrastructure is going to relieve some of that pressure off the Hasbrook pump station, so it doesn't overflow, and also the sewage treatment plant in the City of Kingston. So, so the, this infrastructure, fix our infrastructure, correct our infrastructure, making it better for future generations is so important, and we're doing that now, and it's something we should be proud of for future generations. We may see a few more leaves and twigs in the roundabout creek, but it won't be sewage overflowing from the sewage treatment plant. So this is going to be a positive thing for the environment, this is going to be a positive thing for future generations of the City of Kingston, and I hope you all consider that vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? Seeing no one else, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now move to resolution, bond ordinance, resolution 177.
Resolution 177 of 2019. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of an additional $3,339,800 bonds of the City of Kingston, Ulster County, New York, to pay costs in connection with the Hasbrook CSO Stormwater Separation in and for said city.
Longwall, first speaker, please.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman O'Reilly?
Yes.
Alderman Shavit?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ventura Morale?
Aye.
Alderman Coop?
Yes.
Alderman Scott Childress?
Aye.
Alderman Worthington? Alderman Carey?
Aye.
Bond ordinance is adopted, nine zero. We now move to resolution number 178.
Resolution 178 of 2019. Resolution, the common counsel of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing a budgetary transfer in the 2019 DPW budget for $19,200.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now move to resolution number 179.
Resolution 179 of 2019. Resolution, the common counsel of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing a budgetary transfer from contingency to the 2019 DPW budget as per attached.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. We now move to resolution number 180.
Resolution 180 of 2019. Resolution, the common counsel of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the adoption of a bond ordinance for the additional sum of $275,000 for increased construction cost of Jacobs Valley Storm Drain Project.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine zero. Now we move to the resolution 181 bond ordinance.
Resolution 181 of 2019. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of an additional $275,000 bonds of the City of Kingston, Ulster County, New York, to pay costs of the Jacobs Valley Storm Silver Replacement Project in and for said city.
On the question. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Point man, I stand corrected. Longwall.
Alderman O'Reilly?
Yes.
I'm the next major, I guess, I'm my major. Alderman Shavit?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw?
Aye.
Alderman Ventura Morale?
Aye.
Alderman Coop?
Aye.
Alderman Scott Childress?
Aye.
Alderman Worthington?
Yes.
Alderman Carey?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Bond ordinance is adopted, nine zero. Now move on to resolution number 182.
Resolution 182 of 2019. Resolution of the common counsel of the City of Kingston, New York, to undertake a coordinated review of the City of Kingston, New York Open Space Plan.
On the question. Alderman Davis?
Mr. President, yesterday, we had some speakers being in the caucus to talk about the surprise to learn that, some property that they had been for years looking to try to develop was inside this open space, the U-MAN. Even though the light bins told them that they should not have any concerns, when they're not notified right away, people are going to have concerns.
not notified right away, people are going to have concerns about the property. So I would just feel that I would motion to have this table closed. I think we have some questions and I believe these people that were in this process of trying to develop this land and for whatever reason right now it's not moving forward should have an opportunity to address the council and address any other parties in the city of Kingston that need to be addressed for this piece of parcel of property is put into this new map. And for them to have a clear understanding and they begin after discussions walk away understanding that this land that they have tried to purchase is not going to be affected by this. But on what I can add and I can't speak further than they do have concerns. And I think that this should be tabled to most concerns to be discussed and rectified. So I motion to have this resolution 182 tabled and sent back.
Also Alderman Davis, I mean, I believe you mean to refer back to committee.
Yes, I'm referring back, sorry.
Do you have a motion or I have a second to refer back to committee? Okay, we have a motion and second to refer back. On the question anyone want to talk about before I call for the vote? Alderman Scott Childers.
I respectfully would like to point out that the irony here is that if we declare the common council lead agency, this actually opens up the space for discussion, for public discussion of the open space plan. It requires us to have public hearings and to really listen to folks who might be affected. The other thing to be clear about is that the open space plan is akin to our city's comprehensive plan. It doesn't take anybody's property. It doesn't encumber them in any way. It simply gives city officials, the planning board, for example, done a bit of information to consider when they're looking at different kinds of projects. Now, far be it from me to stand in the way of a project that has its aim, the development of affordable housing. So we'll do everything we can to support that process for the particular votes that Alderman Davis mentioned. At the same time, I don't see any problem with declaring the common council lead agency. So I will vote against the motion.
Anyone else on the question before I call for the vote? Alderman Cooper and Alderman Martin.
I would just like to say all we're looking here is the name of the city of Kingston Commons Council Lead Agency. There's a lot of work been done on this and in times of the absence, I think we should move ahead. I respectfully will vote against my colleague's request to send this back to committee. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm sorry, Alderman Martin.
So I just wanted to agree with Alderman Davis and I think we should refer this back to committee based on the representatives that came into caucus last night and talked to us. Unfortunately, a lot of the things that they were saying, I was not even aware of and prior to making a decision, I'd like to be informed of everything that's going on. I understand that we're only declaring it to be the lead agency. However, we still have questions. I would be more comfortable if we could get some people to come in and explain all of us to us. It just seems like it's really, there's some surprising issues that came up. And while some of my colleagues may not believe that's important, I think it's important to the reps that came in tonight to understand fully what is going on with this open space. So I will be voting to refer it back to committee.
Anyone else on the question? Alderman Carey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was prepared to vote against and refer it back to committee for the reason that it's really just about secur. But enlightened by a fellow Alderman beside me, I think since there are some questions and there's a comfort level that I respectfully would like them to have, I will join them and also refer that. And I don't think mine is against it, so I will.
Anyone else? Hearing no one else, I'll call for the vote to refer back. All in favor? To refer back is I. A later hand please, so that I make use here. One, two, three, four, five, six. Opposed, the one, two, three. Okay, so the motion to refer back is adopted, six, three. Now to resolution number 183.
Resolution 183 of 2019. Resolution, the common council of the city of Kingston, New York authorizing the mayor to sign a municipal agreement to activate a local law to establish a sustainable energy loan program in the city of Kingston, open seed pace.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
I oppose. Resolution is adopted, nine, zero. We now move to resolution number 184.
Resolution 184 of 2019. An ordinance amending an ordinance in relation to the traffic on the public streets of the city of Kingston, New York, adding no parking in the area of each street crossing of the Kingston Point rail trail as attached.
On the question? Alderman O'Reilly.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Kingston Point rail trail goes directly through my ward and safety of residents of the city of Kingston paramount. This is just one of the safety features that are going into protecting the people using the rail trail and protecting, which is just important, protecting the residents of that neighborhood from getting into some kind of accident with the people using the rail trail. So it's important that we take a look at the neighborhood, it's important that we take a look at the rail trail and we make this work. This is just one step in making the rail trail safe, but also making it safe for residents to drive their cars through that area. So I support this, I hope we do too, and I believe that there's going to be more safety features as we go forward. This is a start and I will thank you.
Anyone else on the question before I call for the vote? Seeing no one else, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
I oppose. Resolution is adopted, nine, zero. We now move to resolution number 185.
Resolution 185 of 2019. Resolution, the common council of the city of Kingston, New York authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation for Water Infrastructure Improvement Act grant in the amount of $717,450 for Phase One and Phase Two of the Hasbrook CSO Sewer Shit Stormwater Separation Project and to execute any and all related documents.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
I oppose. Resolution is adopted, nine, zero. We now move to resolution number 186.
Resolution 186 of 2019. Resolution, the common council of the city of Kingston, New York modifying the position of building, safety and zoning clerk from part-time to full-time.
On the question? Hearing no debate, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
I.
Oh, I'm sorry, do you have your hand up?
Yeah.
Okay, darling.
Thank you, Mr. President. The building department, my understanding, has worked very hard this year. I've talked to the head of the building department, Steve Knox, and he said at this point they've processed more fees than they have in all of last year at this point in the year. So it's very busy down there and this clerk is obviously needed, so I will vote. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? Okay, let's put the vote again. All in favor?
I oppose. Resolution is adopted, nine, zero. We now go to resolution number 187.
Resolution 187 of 2019. Resolution, the common council of the city of Kingston, New York amending city code 370-16 to make such application as set forth and to be scheduled to be established by the common council.
On the question? Alderman Shaw.
I'd like to make a motion to refer to this resolution back to committee. Talked about it at caucus last night. We wanted to readdress how we're going to approach this, so I make that motion.
And do I have a second to refer back? Never first and a second on the question? Hearing no debate, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
I oppose. Resolution is referred back, nine, zero. We now move on to resolution number 188.
Resolution 188 of 2019. Resolution, the common council of the city of Kingston, New York authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation for Water Infrastructure Improvement Act grant in the amount of $586,441 for the Henry Street Sewer Restoration Project and to execute any and all related documents.
On the question? Alderman Carey.
Yes, Mr. President. Alderman O'Reilly touched upon it earlier, but I think there are some good things happening in Kingston that people need to be aware of. For decades, probably upward of about half a century, and including the first time I ever went for office eight years ago, one of the things we always heard was that Kingston only cares about what's above the ground and not under the ground. And I think we've altered this phrase and when is Kingston going to stop being reactive and proactive with our infrastructure? And I commend and thank Mayor Noble, my colleagues, and the department heads and the hardworking people in the city of Kingston for changing that dialogue a little bit. I think we've done some remarkable things in our infrastructure and it's gotten a lot of heat because our roads aren't as much as they want to be, but there's been so much progress in this area and not just in getting things fixed in a proactive way, but also in a manner that we're saving millions of dollars for the future generations. Again, Alderman O'Reilly, the future, what have those impacts of future? And when we have ground open up and we can replace things, we're replacing them. We're providing services and resources from the federal grants and state and county opportunities. And I think this is a, the Henry Street, you know, if we were to just ignore it like has happened in the past, and three, four, five years later, we had to dig this back up, it would have cost millions and millions more to our children, grandchildren, what we put in the bill and that. So I know we're uncomfortable, hands and minds, spending money that have, you know, a couple commas in them, but ultimately this is a huge savings and again, I applaud the mayor for addressing this infrastructure in the manner he has. And again, I thank everyone for supporting these initiatives. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question before I call for the vote? Seeing no one, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
I oppose. Resolution is adopted, nine, zero. We now move to resolution number 189.
Resolution 189 of 2019. Resolution, the common council of the city of Kingston, New York agreeing to pay the costs and responsibilities of local features, sanitary sewer betterments of the Kingston Roundabout I-8587 at Albany Avenue project within the geographical jurisdiction of the city of Kingston.
On the question? Alderman Scott Childers.
I would like to follow all the previous comments of my colleagues. This is another example of us making a somewhat difficult decision to pay a lot of money, but in the end, this is going to save us a lot of money. Because the state will be opening up all that area around the intersection of Broadway I-87 and Albany, that means that this is going to cost us a lot less money to change aged infrastructure under there. It's also going to mean that we don't have to hire all kinds of folks in order to review the process and we'll be in a good place to change, to improve our infrastructure at less lower cost than it would be if we were taking this on by ourselves.
Anyone else on the question? Seeing no one else, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
I oppose. Resolution is adopted, nine, zero. We now move on to resolution number 199.
Resolution 198 of 2019. Resolution, the common council of the city of Kingston, New York authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with CGR, Center for Governmental Research, in the amount of up to $32,000 for a vacancy study of rental buildings containing six or more units in the city of Kingston with a budgetary transfer as per attached.
On the question? Alderman Davis.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. It's why I'm a player, it had a lot of calls up last month in regard to when I suggested that we table this back to committee for a while. Not that I was against this ETPA, that $32,000 to sum is a lot of money and not to have all the answers that being some of our colleagues brought up in regard to exactly what they were willing to be accomplishing and how they were going to accomplish. Since then, I did my homework. People reached out to me, I reached out to people, they get answers, and those answers satisfy, satisfied my questions. So I just wanted to mention, state that I will be a guest in regard to this ETPA and the intended protection act. And I just think, you know, going forward, that we have to make sure that we're spinning packed papers, reading files, and had questions about something. If you can't get those answers right away, that in my opinion, you should put that along until you can get the right answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question before I call for the vote? Seeing no one, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
No, I'm sorry. Alderman O'Reilly, are you slow or am I? I'm slow, I'm slow. You know, my chair is really low. I try to sit down and screw it. All right, switch it out. Most of the rental housing units in the city of Kingston are in homes. That's where they are. They're all homes and it's split into two and it's split into four. I tell you what's going to happen, the city has its cities throughout the country. And by the way, I play such a crap in the world. What happens when you try to impose rent control? Because landlords of these properties, take back your property, they turn it into a single family home, they gentrify it and they sell, leaving less housing for the community. So when we make economic decisions like this, my fellow councilmen, you have to, like Doug said, you can't give your site, you have to look to the future. You can't say, oh, this is a quick fix, I'm going to get this done this way. It could be a good sense, but that's exactly what happened in San Francisco when they did this. Now, they turned all the homes, all the rental apartments, not all of them, but many of them, they turned into high-end condos and the city became gentrified and it backfired in San Francisco. It backfired in cities all around the world. This kind of economic policy, which is much we are about to approve right there, really needs to be taken a deeper look at. You can't, you can't, if you do one thing, something else is going to happen. And Doug knows the law of conservation of energy, right? There's only so much there and if you change something, something else has to change. So if you do this, something's going to change. What's going to change is the attitudes of the landlords and how they look at their properties. You're going to be closing your properties down to renters because they're not going to be getting the rents that they need to sustain these properties. Someone comes into our town right now, buys a $300,000 home or a $300,000 apartment building and it's not being or business and it's not able to get the rents to pay for that, well what happens? Well, they can't pay their rent. They have to foreclose on their building and they have to move out. That's, that's part of the problem. There's economic engine driving here. And if we stop that economic engine from going forward, what happens is housing is going to be hurt in the city of Kingston. The net result is less housing in the city of Kingston, less affordable housing in the city of Kingston. I know it doesn't appear that way now and I know we want to help people now and I know we all feel that and I feel that too. But as Doug said, we can't look at the short run, we have to look at the long picture here. What's this going to do to our housing population in the city of Kingston if we continue down this economic road of controlling rents by the government? This is not a good idea. It's not a good economic policy. It's a failed economic policy around the world. We should take a look at that, we should take a look at the long term, what's going to happen to the people in our town? What's going to happen to the people in our town is exactly the opposite of what we are hoping this kind of policy will do. It's going to force people out, it's going to change the dynamic of our town, it's going to, it's going to change landlords from thinking about renting their homes to people, thinking about taking their property, dividing up and renting it to people, and it's going to close that whole debt. They're not going to, they're not going to think about that anymore because they're going to be controlled, the amount of rent that they can charge, controlled what they're going to be able to do. So what they're going to do is they're going to take those properties, they're going to go to their employers, they're going to figure out how they can get around this, they're going to get around it that they have done in every other place in the world that rent control has been put into effect and let her start closing down housing. So the net result, less housing in the city of Kingston if we go through with these policies. I hope you see that, I hope you look to the future, I hope you see that this is not a sound economic policy. It doesn't work, people don't work that way. You can't tell people, you're going to make less profit and it's okay. It doesn't work that way, you don't build buildings that way. You build buildings like you say to people, look, come on into our town, build a new building, build some new apartments in our town, and yes, you can make, you can make a profit in our town. And no, we're not going to stagnate that with our, with government policy, government regulations. So I think this, although the intent is wonderful and we all want to help people who are in trouble, this is maybe not the way. Maybe there might be other ways, some services that the government can provide, you and I can think about providing to people who are in trouble with maybe tax rebates or other ways of giving them help to pay their rent in some other form. But to stagnate the economic process of landlords actually wanting to come to our town, wanting to build buildings and wanting to be here, this is the opposite of that. And I hope you see that and I hope you see that this is a, this is a slippery slope and it's a long slope. It's a long slope, it's going to slope, it's going to be the end zone, the bottom of that hill, so it'll be less housing in the city of Kingston. I think this is a bad idea. I think going through this just, is just, it's just one step down that slippery slope, the first step down that slippery slope. And there we go, in our town we have less housing. Thank you very much.
Get going. We started with Alderman Shaw and Almera Ray.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the question really isn't what is going to happen to the citizens of Kingston, it's what is happening right now. And I think that is where we are and what we need to be thinking about. First of all, some clarification of this study is, this vacancy study is for units with six or more, a building with six or more units, not personal houses. And this isn't a quick fix and people here need a quick fix. I'm getting calls regularly from the apartment complex in 49 and I'm sure that there are other colleagues, my colleagues, that are getting phone calls, that the rent is increasing by $300, $400 a month. So we do need a quick fix and this isn't a quick fix. And I have to explain to them that this is just the first step in the long process of rent stabilization. And we shouldn't be worried about, no, we don't have the luxury of being worried about gentrifying, we are already there. So we need to, we need to make steps now. We don't have the luxury of waiting and the people who live in apartment buildings who have been bought recently and their rents are skyrocketing, we cannot afford it, we need to make, we need to move ahead of this. Thank you.
Alderman Martin.
Yeah, I want to second what Alderman Shaw said. With all due respect to Alderman O'Reilly, justification is already here. And I too have gotten numerous calls about people not being able to afford to live in their apartments. For months and months, we have been talking about the need for affordable housing in Kingston and that we do not have enough affordable housing in Kingston. This is one step and we can look into this study and pass rent stabilization to keep people in their homes. Fortunately, many of us sitting right here, we don't have that problem where we're going, we can't afford to live in our homes. Sometimes we get so far removed from what other people are going through that we don't stop to take time to think about what they're going through. And so affordable housing is necessary, the city is already being gentrified. If you come up to my ward, I hear people telling me and my daughter-in-law that are working two and three jobs and still can't afford to live into their apartment and they get fired. And so this is something that we need to do and hopefully we will pass this tonight.
Thank you. Alderman Scott Childers.
First, I'd like to second what Alderman Shaw noted. ETPA is not about the kind of units that Alderman O'Reilly mentioned. It's about those units, building from six units or more till before 1974. That's about, I think, 1,700, 1,800 units here in town. So we actually would also like to explore lots of different ways of working with alternative forms of housing, trying to invite more of the kind of folks into the market that Alderman O'Reilly mentioned. We have a lot of possibilities here and trying to look at ETPA is simply one of them. I applaud to what, I applaud what Alderman O'Reilly called for and that is more information. And that ironically is exactly what we're asking for. By having this review, we will have more information. We'll know what kind of crisis we're in, we'll know whether we're in a crisis as defined by the state. We know that we're in a type of crisis because of those skyrocketing rents that people are paying in all kinds of units across town. But another thing that's important to point out too is I believe Alderman O'Reilly is right about rent control. However, we're not talking about rent control, ETPA does not talk about rent control, it's rent stabilization. And that's a very different process. Rent stabilization is more a negotiating process and one that any responsible elected official, I think, we want to investigate and understand clearly so that we can put that in our possible quiver of options as we deal with the question of where our residents are going to live and how they're going to live, whether they're going to be able to afford their housing and have decent places to live.
Alderman Carey?
Yes. Ironically, I had a couple of landlords approach me the last couple of days, quite angry and although they were angry about something that didn't have to do with this per se, but I just want to support what Alderman O'Reilly says in that their plans were to do exactly what, what he said is happening. So I do support this study because I think it gives us more information and I don't think this, this quite puts us on that slope. He's actually right, it's a slippery slope and, and I just urge everyone going forward that we really look at this and, and try to, try to see, we don't have a crystal globe, but you do have to see the long-term effect on that. It might help in the short term, but I think, I think he makes great points and I think, again, I support, support the study because I think it'd be good to know what we have in the city of Kingston. But after that, I think we got to be very careful in not having any jerk reactions. It's a very terrible situation as it all pays as well because, you know, it's, you know, it puts a lot of these points, you think, so thank you.
Okay, anyone else before I call for the vote? Alderman Shaw and then Alderman O'Reilly.
Thank you, Mr. President. Everybody has a lot of good things to say about this.